Came a call, uh, called a meeting to order. And declared we have a quorum, asked Ms. Gent, though she would open us with a word of prayer.
Father, I just want to thank you, dear Lord, for this day. Just thank you for the many blessings that you give to us. Thank you for this season, dear Lord, and let us all remember the true reason of it is at your birth. I pray, dear Lord, for the meeting today. I pray, dear Lord, that your guidance and clarity will be in each of the hearts and the minds that we need to make decisions on, dear Lord. I pray for our country, dear Lord. I pray that they will turn back to you and lead strong. I ask blessings on each of these people, dear Lord, and thank you again. And I ask this in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, consent agenda.
Yes, sir. I have regular minutes of November the twenty seventh, special minutes of December the fourth. I have a personnel report. I have an investment report, October of twenty twenty-three. And I have unreconciled, excuse me, treasurer's report, September the thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, and November the thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. The financial reports I do have of the sheriff, the county clerk, agrar law, Ecad, constable one, tax collector, and DMV reports. I do have, uh, five sets of bills, claims, and accounts. And I have no certificates for three E or three D. That's what I got.
I concur. Ms. Key?
Um, I don't have anything to add to that. I do not have the certification of additional revenue or amendment changes by fund.
Okay. And we didn't have any, that I saw, we didn't have any certificates, we didn't have any purchase acknowledgements or anything like that.
No.
But we do have new hires.
Yes.
So will we get those from the new hires?
We should get them, or they came through the last court, let me see who they are.
I was just wondering.
I believe one of them came through last court, and I'll have to check on the other.
Okay. And we did have an investment report.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Did Jamie think to add on that?
No, sir.
Okay. Any questions or?
I'll make the motion way through if you did.
Okay, motion by Mr. Rains.
I'll say.
Second by Mr. Maxwell. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Alright, consent agenda, items are approved. James, how you doing? How's the, the weather affecting that? Me any?
Yeah, everything is safe. Now I got blood clot in it.
Oh, no.
Yeah.
What they gonna do about that?
Uh, they must put me on some kind of medication. They said, well, it might be a little when I checked it. They said it's excessive, so it must be pretty good size.
Holy cow.
I guess that's why it's not healing that good. You just thought that medicine you've been drinking would help.
Yeah, you'd think.
We were starting to say prayer for you, babe.
Yeah, that's. Got me worried a little bit, but they said everything's gonna be okay. What they said. Take an extra swig, get all cleared up.
He said, take an extra swig and clear it up.
Yeah. Judge, you done on the football games now?
Yeah, no, nobody got a, out of our chapter, got a state game. So we're done. But I had a good season.
What did Albany do?
They're in it. They're playing this week.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Uh, Gordon's other team, I think, plays Westbrook. Two teams around.
Yeah, this is like Albany's sixth, sixth visit to the state.
They're playing at the stadium.
Yeah. Yeah. The first state game I ever did was in, in Stevieville.
Really?
It was a, oh, it was a one A game when that was still a eleven man. And it was at Stevieville.
Played at Torrington or?
Yeah. Yeah, it was kinda crazy. We kinda assumed it's all gonna be at Jerry's World, but.
Yeah.
It used to not be.
No. You do many six games, six man games?
No, y'all live.
That's too much money.
I didn't. I came, I came here from the College Station chapter and had a real nice letter from the chapter, said this, uh, you know, this is a number three ranked referee in the chapter.
Yeah, I really thought you'd be number one.
First, not at that, not at that point.
No.
And, uh, anyway, they, they said, uh, as I get here, the first game I get is a six man game. I'm like, uh, I've never done six man football. And they said, just a few, few changes should be fine.
Keep extra steps.
Well, you know, you've done so many, you've done so many eleven man deals. You know where the ten, ten yards up for a first down. I get up there like that and I start singing. I look over there and it's fifteen yards for first down. I went, second down. Okay, it takes care of that. Burn ban. I talked to, uh, visited with three, uh, of our chiefs. And all three of them said with the frost killing everything off, their recommendation was that we keep the burn ban on. Uh, and maybe the following week or later on in the, if we get some kinda, you know, significant amount of rain, we can take it off. But my recommendation would be to leave the burn ban on. If you guys are agreement with that, okay? Uh, nine eleven update and cooperative dispatch, Sheriff?
Uh, nothing to report.
Okay. Uh, emergency amendments, Ms. Key?
None.
Okay. Uh, D, uh, discuss buying another monitor for Stephanie to help with Tyler Technologies, Judge Glenn. Want another monitor, just give her more viewing of what's messed up?
Yes. Put it blunt. Uh, we're just looking to get a monitor. Uh, our, our collections agents have found a person that's an expert in Tyler. As you and Ms. Loretta have met her. And that's her recommendation is two monitors, one for JP one, one for JP two. That way you keep everything clear and simple, so to speak. Um, we've got a quote from, uh, Carrie and, uh, the exact same monitor she has right now is a twenty, Dell twenty-seven. It's two sixty-nine.
Sure. I mean, it's coming out of your technology fund in any way.
I believe so.
That's where it'll have to come from, which is why he needs Commissioner's Court approval.
Yeah.
And there's a copy of the budget for everybody.
I'll make the motion to allow the expenditure purchase.
Okay, motion by Mr. Rains, second by Mr. Maxwell. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, same sign. There you go, Judge. You're good to go.
Thank you.
We did that for Judge Spear.
Um, for the record, it's going to come out of zero four zero four five five zero three five six zero zero computer equipment.
That's, that's the one that I had right off the top of my head.
It is.
Ms. Vickers. Approval of the yearly report for SART.
Thank you. Okay, I brought two different documents with me. One of them is a brief outline that y'all looked at a year ago, but it's changed because we now have, uh, different people. Okay. Oh, I'm sorry, Kathy, just take one and pass it around. I'll keep one. So y'all will, well, whenever they get someone. Y'all require, if y'all recall, this is that legislative law that the Texas legislators, legislators put in to affect a year ago, Senate Bill Number seven, four seventy-six, we now have to keep up with the amounts of adult sexual assaults that occur in our county. Um, there's not very many, but we'll talk about that in just a moment. But we have to give y'all, um, the brief outline once a year, just to make sure that you know who else on the team. And then we give you a biennial, I think I spelt it wrong, biennial report, um, once every other year, starting in December of twenty-three. Okay? So the first thing is this one right here. You'll notice that the only difference is, well, there's two differences. Tim Pitts is now the presiding member instead of Jotham. So we all voted on that and had Tim Pitts become the presiding member. And then also we added Kenneth Preston to it. Um, what the law says is that the highest population, um, city with the law, with law enforcement agency is the, is gonna be on the law enforcement team or the law enforcement member on the team. It was Eastland. Eastland has about twenty-seven more people than Cisco. Okay? And then I got to looking at our figures and Kenneth, um, they filed more adult sexual assault cases than any other city. So, um, I asked the other members if they were okay with that, just by email. And so we added Kenneth Preston to the team. So now we have two law enforcement agents. That would be Tim Pitts, who's still the presiding, uh, member, and then Kenneth Preston. Okay, so that's the difference on that. And then Kathy, there's a thing on the back.
Are you still on the sheriff?
Still on the list.
Yeah, yeah. No, you're still on it. Sorry. You have to be. The sheriff has to be on it. So that's for you to, for Judge to sign and for you to certify. And then I guess y'all keep that, that one. Okay?
Yes. Do you just need copies of it or do you need a?
No, I, I don't need the original. I just made me a copy of yours whenever you do it and we'll put it in our file. Okay? So I developed a, a filing system or a, a, a whole thing of this and it's in our office. Right now I'm on there, Brenda Vickers, and I am the, uh, secretary to the presiding member. Most of the district attorney's offices are. I'll be leaving January the second. So Tina Price is a lady I've known for thirty years. She's taking my place. She's very experienced. She'll probably become the secretary. I'm assuming she will because I'm assuming that she's gonna be doing the sexual assault cases. Well, I know she is. Okay. Anyway, okay. Alright, the next one is the biennial report. And now please understand that this law was probably set up for the major counties. Because major counties have several different police agencies and different agencies that work with sexual assault victims. And so when it comes to rural, most of our sexual assault cases are children, unfortunately. It's horrible. Y'all would be appalled if I gave y'all a report on sexual assaults of children, which maybe I just need to do, just so y'all know. You, you have no idea how many we have. Uh, but the adults, we don't have very many. And that's because most of them don't report. They're either abused by their husband, their boyfriend, they get raped, or they're doing drugs and they're in a drug house and they get raped. Or they, um, think they put themselves in a situation like a date rape and they, they won't report it. They may go get some services from the crisis center. Um, Kathy, if you'll take this and pass it around, this will be, that top one will be yours for the, for, and then I don't need a copy of that. Okay? So you'll see that, um, we have to get each person who's on the team to give us a report about the cases that they have. And so you'll see that Sane, Sane is the, uh, uh, sexual assault nurse, nurses, uh, whatever. I can't even remember what it's called.
Sexual examination.
Thank you. And, uh, she's out of Hendrix Hospital. Um, she had six adults from Eastland County in the last year. This year will go from December first of twenty-three through November thirtieth of twenty-two. Last year went through December of twenty-two through, um, December first, twenty-two through November of twenty-three. So it's kind of a weird how it breaks up, but that's because they require us to give it to y'all, the first meeting y'all have in December on the odd years. So from December first through November the twenty-third, Susie Strigler, who's on our team, she's in charge of the Sane nurses at Hendrix. She reported that there were six different, um, adults that she saw out of our county. Eastland Police Department filed one. Eastland County Crisis Center, they visited with fifty-three total adult sexual assault cases. That just kinds, goes to show you that, um, people don't file, the adults don't file some of these. Sometimes they're men and they don't want other people to know that they got raped or whatever. And this actually falls into line with a statistic I just recently learned. The, um, Department of Justice does a, a send out a survey, and I'm probably giving y'all too information, too much information, but I want you to know. The Department of Justice sends out a survey every two years across the United States. And it's random. It says, have you ever been, um, a victim of a crime? And if you have, what kind? And did you report it? And so then they get those statistics back and they give them to the different, uh, crisis centers and district attorney's offices and people like that throughout the nation. Y'all wanna know how many sexual assault cases are filed on a national basis? According to the people who said that they were sexually assaulted, and that would include people that had been sexually assaulted as children or were now adults, because it goes out to adults. One percent. One. So that kinda lines up with, they've seen fifty-three people in our county. We've had two people report. And so, um, we, that's what this team is set up for. It's set up for us to communicate more effectively, but in this county we do anyway because it's so small. Like, um, the sheriff's officer, Cisco PD or Eastland PD will bring cases in and visit with me about them before we take them into the grand jury to see what they, additional things that they might need if they don't have it. So really this county effectively does everything that this law was set up to make counties do anyway. Uh, the only thing is that in the future, I'm hoping that the sheriff's office, along with the district attorney's office, will create some kind of small, um, task force for sexual assault cases and maybe a sexual assault investigator. Our sheriff is very well qualified, but he's the sheriff. So he can't do it. Look at him like, no. Anyway, so. But, um, but anyway, that's a discussion that's going around, you know, between the, uh, sheriff's office and the two major PDs and our office. And so we'll see how that works out in the next year or so. Anyway, so the MHMR Center for Life Resources, I'm sure that they have a staggering amount as well. But the way that they do their books, they cannot record stats. I mean, they can't recall the stats. So they're trying to set up a system where they can start recalling the stats so that next time y'all get a report, you'll know how many people that they saw. And then Eastland had zero, I mean, sheriff's office had zero adult sexual assault cases filed in Cisco. They filed one, but we disposed of five adult sexual assault cases out of Cisco this year. And that's was the reason why I wanted to put Kenneth on there is because I knew that we'd had adult sexual assault cases out of Cisco. So then, um, we reported the two adult sexual sa- assault cases filed, and that was the one out of Cisco and the one out of Eastland. And so you'll see that they all either sent me an email or they sent me some stats or whatever, and those are the exhibits attached. So, um, I would ask that y'all, well, we don't have, the legislators did not even set up guidelines as to what y'all were supposed to do, other than this. Okay? So there's no signing off on the report. It just is what it is. We also created, um, through our team, an amended bylaws, because I had to change, um, Judge Holm to Tim Pitts and add, um, add KP, and then also the memorandum of understanding. We just did that, which we had to do before the end of this year. And everybody signed off on that and the protocol was the same. And we discussed the protocol before, but those are things that we just keep within the team members. And according to the law, these are the documents that y'all are supposed to see and us let you know about. But y'all are welcome at any time. If you want to go down there and read that, it's about that thick. That protocol took me forever to do. So, but y'all are welcome. It'll be in the district attorney's office. If any of you ever decide you wanna go down there and read it, you're more than welcome to do that.
Okay, Brenda, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any questions for Ms. Vickers?
No, no.
Okay.
Oh, then we're gonna miss her.
Thank you. Thank you, Judge. Thanks, guys. I appreciate it so much.
So that's a report only.
Yes, sir.
Well, you gotta sign that.
We still have something I had to sign.
Yes, sir. There's a resolution on the back of that.
Then I'll just get a copy from Kathy. Okay, thanks, Lee.
You gonna sign yours or?
I'll make the motion to accept it while I'm just signing.
Okay. Motion by Mr. Rains, second by Mr. Maxwell. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, same sign?
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Okay, uh. Do it. You gonna give me one back? Uh, F, consider, discuss, uh, discuss, consider, discuss, take action, sheriff's office donating to surplus vehicle, Rise the Star, Sheriff Wager.
Morning, guys. So, as y'all know, we've been working pretty hard on updating the fleet over there and getting stuff, uh, better. But with that has come, I've got a few extra vehicles now that we haven't sold yet and, and we're, we're planning on sell, selling them. But I was speaking with the chief, uh, Ride the Star and, and one of their vehicles is in very bad shape and in need of replacement. And even though one of the ones that I have taken out of service for us, it's still a whole lot better than, than what they've got. Uh, and it's, it, it's still, it's still good. Be good for going around Ride the Star and, and stuff like that. And I would like to give it over to Ride the Star instead of selling it. It's not worth, you know, the used market on police cars is not very, very strong. We're probably talking four, five thousand dollars, maybe. Um, but I would like to, uh, give that over to them, along with, with all the outfit equipment that's currently installed in it.
I think that's a, a very good, very good idea. And I, you know, commend you, Sheriff, for, uh, for taking care of some of these agencies that, that, uh, I'm sure would do the same if the position were reversed, so.
Do we have an interlocal with Rising Star?
Well, it depends on which, which we're talking about. There's, there's different ones for different things, but I don't know about for giving them over to. I would think that, that the council or the commissioner's action would serve as, as that today for this purpose, but whatever.
Will we need one just to make a donation? Because if we're just relinquishing, making a donation to another governmental agency, I don't think we have to have an MOU, do we?
I don't think so.
That might be a Brad question.
Cause we, we donate stuff to other.
It happens all the time.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, it wouldn't make it be any different than purchasing from another governmental agency off of a bid or just purchasing. You don't have to have anything for those, other than just like the purchase.
Well, my, my, my suggestion is, is that we go ahead and if you guys are agreeable, we'll go ahead and make the, make the, make the motion.
My only question is, this is not one we just spend a bunch of money on updating.
Oh, no. No, sir. No, sir. It's one that's been taken out of the, no, sir, it's not.
And can we get the last five of the bin and what it is?
It's a twenty seventeen Tahoe. Last five is five, five, three, four, seven.
My recommendation is that we go ahead and allow the sheriff to do that and we can check with the DA's office and, and that all of this would be contingent on them saying that there, there didn't need to be any special paperwork, but go ahead and authorize the sheriff to do that.
I make the motion.
Motion by Mr. Wilson. Second by Mr. Maxwell. Those in favor say aye. Opposed, same sign. Judge votes yes.
Thanks, guys. Appreciate that. I know they'll appreciate that, too.
Anything we can do to help out. Now, we're not fueling that thing. We're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna drain that gas deal before whatever gets down there. So you guys are gonna have to push it or tow it or something.
Are you siphoning the gas out?
I'm gonna have the sheriff do that. Uh, G, consider, discuss, take action, accept and donation from First Financial Bank to be used for the sheriff's office equipment, Sheriff Wager.
So First Financial, I'm sure a lot of y'all saw it on, online and in the paper and all that stuff, but they did a amazing fundraiser, um, for us and, um, where they went around and painted deals on all the curbs of, they did it in Cisco and Ranger and Eastland. See the numbers on the curbs with, with the, the mascot and all that is a great deal. Uh, they raised eight thousand and sixty dollars. Um, and they presented me with a check the other day of which I immediately turned over. Uh, but, uh, man, we can't thank those people enough and the citizens enough for, for that. But, uh, I would ask that y'all would accept the donation, um, to be used for sheriff's office equipment.
And which, I'm sorry, which expenditure line will I give?
The one that, the one that you created. Well, I don't, I don't know. You said you were gonna create one.
It's not created yet, but.
The one that the, the last donation went into.
Okay.
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Mr. Rains, second by Mr. Maxwell. Those in favor say aye. Opposed, same sign.
Sheriff, nobody's ever, we ain't ever done that before. Who got them to do that? Was it you?
No, sir. They, they.
They just did it on their own?
They did it on their own. Uh, every, I don't know if they do it every year or every, every so often. They, they pick a, something to do fundraisers for. And, um, of course, we had several, uh, people donating after the, the, uh, bus heckers. And, uh, they thought that that would be a good cause to do it toward this year. So. Yeah.
If you'll get me the information on, I'd, I will send them a thank you letter, too.
That'd be nice. Great. Thank you.
You bet. Thank you. Okay, uh, H, discussing, consider expenditure, county records management preservation budget funds for shredding services, Christina Dodger. Come on down.
I'm just asking for approval to use county records management preservation funds in the amount of two hundred and forty-five dollars to pay for this shredding.
I don't know. I don't know.
I'll make the motion.
Oh, you're too easy.
Yes, she pays her bills, huh?
Good point. Motion, motion by Mr. Rains, second by Mr. Wilson. All those in favor say aye. And since she's paying bills, uh, the votes, judge votes aye as well. Uh, discuss, aye, discuss and consider ratification of the EBC HRA certificate resolution amendment, Ms. Key.
Um, last week, when all the HRA health reimbursement arrangements were attached to the health savings account and online accounts, I noticed that my HRA was four thousand, four hundred dollars, which should only be two thousand, two hundred. Uh, Commissioner Rains was also.
No, HRAs were attached to the HSA account. Yeah.
Um.
That's where my money went.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's reading on.
Here's my thermal. There's my thermal scope.
So what we needed to do was to amend our contract, um, stating that for one person, it's two thousand, two hundred and four, two, two covered.
Actually, it differs between employee, it's on a, the PPO and the HSA.
This is just on the HSA. That's wrong.
Okay.
I'm not sure what's going on with the PPO. I'll follow up with that, too. Um, so this contract is just for the HR. Um, so this contract is just for the HRA attached to the HSA. Yes. Um, and it's just correcting how it was set up.
Okay.
And it's already signed, um, so we're just asking the court to ratify.
Need a rap motion?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Wilson, second by Mr. Rains. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Okay, that concludes our business. Uh, we have...
I'll make the motion, we adjourned.
Motion by Mr. Rains, and second by Mr. Crenshaw. All those in favor say aye. Probably same sign? We adjourned.
Oh, we're recessing.
No, it's all right, we gotta, I'm sorry.
Yeah, we're recessing.
It's not on the agenda. So you have to adjourn.
So you'll, well, we don't have a scheduled meeting either.
Well, we'll just make sure we have a discussion.
Okay. Sit at different tables and...
Yeah.